The third topic is clearly the most significant topic that we're dealing with. And the most significant topic the entire world is dealing with, and that's the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. Um, I don't have to speak much about what this is doing to the world. We know that the impact is uh incredible and um and and quite tragic for many, many people. So I have a few comments before we go, then I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Ruddock, uh who's been chairing our our committee. But I think uh the process we're going to do tonight for the benefit of the trustees and any or all listening online, um I'm I've asked all the superintendents to go around and speak, spend about a minute speaking about their area around how we are um back to the current crisis and how we are prepared for the crisis if it continues for much longer. Everyone is aware that we are currently in a two-week shutdown and the premier last week or this week announced that schools will not be in place by April 6th. Uh, we'll not be going back to school in April 6th. We do not know when we will be going back. There's been no indication as to when. Some jurisdictions around the around the world and within this country uh as such as Alberta has suspended for the school year. That gives them the possibility of returning this school year, but it also gives them the possibility of not. Some American uh areas, uh some American regions, areas have uh canceled school for the entire year. Universities are canceling, colleges are canceling. And so therefore, we are in a giant significant problem with students all over the world and education facilities. So we don't have much more information on when schools will reopen. And we don't know what they will look like when they will reopen. But we will, once we get through this bit of dealing with the current situation, start to prepare for that eventuality. But I would like to make a couple of comments uh around the situation for the benefit of all. Uh, this, there is no question, this is uh the most significant challenge the global community has faced in a great, great many years. It is certainly the most significant challenge that I have personally faced in my lifetime, and I would imagine most of the people sitting around the tables in the in in Halton this evening, although I don't want to be presumptuous about that. Uh, it is a health crisis. Our federal governments and our provincial governments have given directions around closures, quarantine, et cetera. And there is a direct impact on our students in that they are not in school. And uh there's good reasons for them not being in school, and that's to slow down the spread of this virus. For most, this virus is not a critical illness, but for many, it is. And it's causing loss of life and probably lifelong disabilities in others for for many others as well. And it's incumbent upon us to behave responsibly and act responsibly and follow the directions of our our governmental leaders. And we in the Halton District School Board are doing just that. We are shut down. We will open up when we when we are required to open up, and we will be ready to open up when we're when we are. But we're also fully aware that as educators and public servants, we are still working. We are still working and we have income coming in. We may be experiencing family challenges with some of our families who may be ill or more vulnerable or more at risk, and we're fully aware of that and uh so on. We're also fully aware that many of our students and their families and our our their families may be uh more at risk or more uh vulnerable to the illness of COVID virus, COVID-19. And we are certainly empathetic in our hearts toward them. We're also very aware that economic challenges have started and will likely get worse, and they will likely get worse for many in the Halton community. We know that hundreds of thousands of people will be laid off. Some will lose businesses, maybe many will lose businesses, and many people will be hurting financially. This will no doubt cause stress and strain within families and within communities, and we in Halton will be no different than anybody else. And one of our our primary uh jobs is, once we get back in school, is to help support those families and those, particularly the kids from those families, to get through these difficult times. It's also our job to help them get through these times right now, the current time, through our education and through learning continuity, which we will describe a little bit. Um, so finally, I would just like to say this before I turn it over to um to Superintendent uh Ruddock, that we are so grateful as educators to the work of our healthcare professionals, our doctors, nurses, scientists, uh lab technicians, people testing, paramedics and and other first responders, but primarily our healthcare workers who are doing in superlative work and are out there, and they are the real heroes of this situation at this moment. But let's not, I don't also want to forget that people working in grocery stores, delivery drivers, all those people that are making sure there's food, pharmaceuticals available and so on too. They all live and work in Halton as well, and they have their families in their school. I've heard from a great many doctors and healthcare professionals who are parents in our board, worry about their kids, worried about their communities, and they're the ones on the front line. So we are grateful for the work they are doing. So thank you for that. I will turn it over to Superintendent Ruddock, who will kind of run this kind of one-minute session, and then uh we'll open it up for questions from trustees. I do caution everybody that there's lots of answers we will not have tonight, uh but please ask the questions anyway, and we will try to get those answers. Thank you. Superintendent Ruddock.
Uh, thank you Director Miller, uh through the chair, to trustees. Um, I'm happy to give you an update this evening. Uh, this uh team that um that meets daily, the COVID team, uh we formed in late January, and I think we were about six people at that time, and it's now grown to uh twenty-six people, including all of uh our superintendents on the team, uh as well as some additional uh corporate staff and system principals. Uh, but I would also like to add that with every superintendent on the team, there is a uh a larger team working with that, um SO, IPL, system principals, corporate staff. Uh, truly an incredible team that's done uh an amazing amount of work uh in a short period of time to get us uh uh here today. And um we're gonna share with you uh a lot of what uh that were what work has been done. I will say though that we uh our work has been really focused on the immediate, what is essential for right now, what's critical, uh services that we need to continue to deliver. And so um any anything around uh what may happen in May or June, um we're not there yet. We're really focusing on um what are the issues in front of us today. Um, as I said, we meet every day. It's about an hour and a half. Uh, we triage issues, we forecast what uh is coming next. Uh, we make many decisions and really difficult decisions. Um, everything from, as we've already talked about, uh postponing large group events um to how we can manage the volume of refunds, of course, not to mention the continuity of learning and uh working from home expectations. Um, we had a second team, uh the pandemic planning team. We've now really merged those two teams, given the size of the COVID team and the overlap of work. Uh, but the other aspect of this team's work moving forward is the pandemic planning, which was formerly uh with the Pandemic Planning Working Group. And this is really uh focused on planning how we uh organize the work. And as I said, our first phase of this was really focusing on what is uh critical, what's essential, uh such as uh payroll, um and ensuring that our employees are paid, um uh ensuring our bills are paid. Um, the next phase of our work is going to be, if this um shutdown extends much beyond the the initial two weeks, um what other tasks uh are now coming onboard that we need to start looking at to address? Uh, and certainly if it reaches far beyond uh the initial two weeks, and if we don't um reopen until September, what work needs to be done to make sure that we're ready for September? So there's a lot of planning in addition to the the daily triage of work. Um, so I'm gonna call on uh the superintendents that are involved on the team to speak to uh each element of their work, again focusing on um the the immediate needs of the work right now. And with that, um I'll turn it over to Associate Director Boe to speak about the continuity of learning.
Uh, thanks Superintendent Ruddock. So we have a a group of superintendents who are leading this work. And certainly our administrators in our schools are leading it, and we know we have an incredibly talented uh teaching staff out there in our schools who will have creative ways to help us with this as well. We've uh for the purpose of of this update, I've chunked this update into two pieces. One is, what is the work for the next couple of weeks? And then I'll spend just a brief amount of time talking about the longer term. So in the short term, meaning in the original two-week closure period, uh we know that our main task was to have our teachers working on how do we um plan for the longer term? And so that means taking our uh programs, courses, curriculum, resources, uh and making them into a distance learning format from what was likely traditionally a more face-to-face format. And so our teachers will be busy doing that work. We know that in the short uh term, in this couple of weeks, we're gonna need to help provide some support around training and and learning for teachers if they're moving now to uh uh an on a more of an online uh distance learning format. Uh, we have a couple of learning management systems that we typically use, uh D2L in high schools and Google Classroom in high schools and elementary schools, and so there'd be some training pieces there. Uh, we're also looking at, are there tools that teachers are needing to do this work? Um, for example, technology and resources and things that uh might be in the school right now and may not be accessible to them, so there may be some creative ways um of using different kinds of resources uh so that we can get uh we can dig into some of this work. One of the other priorities in the first two weeks, of course, was we wanted our um teachers to be reaching out to families to get kids learning again immediately. Uh, so we did craft a message uh to our administrators, a scripted message that they would share with each of their teachers and ask that a message go out to um all of their families. And the message really was uh had three pieces to it. One was around uh trying to understand the family needs around technology. Are they, you know, are families able to continue to learn online using technology? We wanted to know that because that was important. If if there's not technology there, we're gonna have to problem solve uh how to work with that particular student. We wanted to direct families again to the ministry, uh sorry, to our board website for resources and information, particularly around where to go if if families are in need of support. Things like food programs that are not that are not in place now that schools are not running, um and social emotional needs and those kinds of things. Um, we wanted uh families to be sure there was a a place uh to get information. And then thirdly, and uh we really wanted to ensure that kids had access to learning materials over this first two weeks, and uh we heard about the ministry's release of uh Learn at Home resources. So we reiterated those. We have a number of board resources that are available online as well. And we wanted teachers to provide a little bit of specific direction around the actual courses for high school kids or grade and class materials for our elementary students so that the kids would stay connected to the learning that was happening within their classroom environment. So that was sort of the immediate pieces to get to get things uh moving. Longer term, and we we don't have answers, but I'd I'd like to just identify some of the things that we will need to address long term. Um, and we know this is gonna be really messy. We get that. We have uh done a little bit of work with our unions. We know that's important to have them on side here with us as well. And we're looking at all the challenges now that we are going to need to deal with. Things like the continued teaching and learning in programs where it's it's not conducive to an online or distance format. You might think about things like physical education or or construction course for a couple of examples. What do they look like in a in an online format? We know that there are also lots of other issues related to things like how do we support students with special education needs, English as a second language needs. Um, we know that student technology might be a challenge, so we're we're working on that, as I mentioned earlier. Student mental health supports, uh transition planning, I think trustee Callard or one of the trustees mentioned that earlier. Depending on when we return to school this spring, we may have a really small window of time to do transition planning for our kids. So there's lots and lots of things that we're working on, uh more questions right now than answers, but we will continue to work through these over the next couple of weeks and beyond. Uh, that's it for now from me. Thank you.
Thank you, and over to Superintendent Blackwell for a school operations update.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. Uh, in these unique times, we're working remotely to address, again, some of the immediate work. We're modifying processes uh for families to support requests for transcripts as well as registration of students. We know that we will have uh people that are moving at this time of year, uh and we're facilitating a process in terms of the school-based uh contact and as well as the welcome center. We've also sent messaging to families waiting for decisions around optional attendance and and appeals uh so that they're aware that this process has been delayed and will be reaching out to them very shortly. That's it for me.
Uh, and uh for a school programs update, first we'll start with Superintendent Selmini and then Superintendent Hunt Givens.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, so we are doing a a number of things in school programs. Um, the supporting student learning outside the classroom resources have been posted. That happened yesterday on the HDSB website. And there are four links in elementary, one for kindergarten, for primary, for junior, and for intermediate students. And they all have suggested activities, ideas, and links to other resources and programs and places that uh families can go to support learning in the various uh subject areas within those divisions. Library Services has also updated the online resources available on our HDSB website for families. Uh, and we know that people have been accessing that. There's a rich, rich variety of uh uh material there. Additionally, families can follow uh at HDSB Kids Learn on Twitter, where there will be daily activities for students posted in various subject areas, including literacy, math, outdoor ed, French, science and tech, as well as kindergarten. And finally, school programs and IT staff are currently working together on developing modules for educators to support them in providing distance learning opportunities for their students. That's it for me.
Hi, Superintendent Hunt Givens here, and I do believe this time I can be heard.
Yes.
Yep, again. Wonderful. Okay, uh just to uh complement that piece, the secondary program team has been uh working on this continuity of learning as well. What the ministry has posted for secondary students is uh specific to the more popular courses that happen to be in the province, and so there are many courses that just uh don't appear there. And so the messaging to teachers to reach out to students to let them know where they were in their course and things that they can be doing at home. We have surveys out right now of both staff and students in terms of technology and connectivity. The IPLs are busy working on gathering resources, sharing through our subject-specific Google Groups, creating how-tos for online learning using both Bright Space and G Classroom, which many of our staff are already very, very familiar with, and consulting appropriately to ensure that all issues of equity are addressed. So as David mentioned, we have some long-term challenges we need to overcome, and we're looking uh creatively to overcome any uh challenges of equity, of opportunity, of access, of resources, et cetera. So we're quite busy as well. Thank you.
And for student services, Superintendent Zonacron.
Yes, and uh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Uh, in student services, we're, we've been quite busy as well. Um, staff uh right now are focusing on uh supports for teachers as they are about to begin this this uh distance learning with their students. So making sure that they have the supports available to them uh to help them understand how best to support students with special needs through this new medium. So uh we're breaking it down by exceptionality so that they have uh a menu of tools to draw upon to serve students, for example, with learning disabilities or with autism, et cetera. So breaking uh down the the types of resources and strategies that they can use uh for the the different types of students, their needs, but also preparing um resources for parents, knowing that parents in many ways are going to be the prime educators of their children uh over the coming weeks. And so we want to make sure that we have some resources for them as well. So those are also in development and will be out soon. We've also uh developed um uh some resources for both parents and teachers around student mental health, knowing that uh many of our students required support prior to all of what's going on, but we have certainly students who are even more impacted by this current situation. So uh these tip sheets are uh resources for for staff and parents uh with a number of really helpful links as well of where they can turn uh for how to support students during this time. Uh, also, our professional services staff are developing uh guidelines and doing training for how to support students virtually. So we have um a number of uh things in development so that staff can reach out to students who they were previously serving. We're we're working on with our current caseloads. We want to make sure we're serving those students first. And um that's gonna look different across those different disciplines. Uh, because I think we can do a better job, or maybe it's an easier job to start of serving students, for example, that would be served by social workers and child and youth counselors. Uh, we can do some of that work virtually. Uh, it's a little more challenging, for example, with our psychology staff and our speech-language pathologists. So, but we're working on that as well, and and there's some good networking across the province on how we can do that. Uh, we're also developing a guide for schools about how to move ahead with their school resource team meetings, uh including part participation virtually so that we can move ahead with that process and make sure that we're uh supporting students as needed with that process. And that extends into IPRCs as well, because we need to do those uh effectively moving ahead uh both for now and for some of the placements that students are looking for for the fall. So we do need a little bit of a legal consult on that, just to make sure we comply with the leg- the legislation, but we are moving ahead with that also. Um, and I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for facility services and business services, we'll start first with Superintendent Puchetti and then Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you very much Superintendent Ruddock. I hope everybody can hear me okay. Uh, so um just to update too, um all the schools have now uh received a deep clean, and they have been closed since last week. With the exception of a few schools where we do have major construction projects, those schools will receive a deep clean uh prior to students and staff coming back to the building so that the contractors can continue to do work in the building. Um, we have uh disabled all swipe cards and keypads to the building so that we can control access into the building. Right now, the only people going into our schools are our field supervisors and our security contractors to do a visual check of the spaces, and they do this every two days. They also walk around the building uh and check the um the portables. Um, just to say, we've also canceled community use of schools uh through our permits, and we're in the process of letting all the community users know. Um, and of course, if the situation changes, we'll do our utmost to reinstate community use permits. Similarly, with childcare and before-and-after operators, we've also let them know that they will be uh they will not be charged rent while the school remains closed. Um, and we are looking at the impact of the shutdown on our construction schedule for tendering school renewal projects to see what we can um uh move or defer to uh later months and still get some of the work done at school. So um that's it for me from facilities. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. It's Roxana Nagoy, and I have a few updates from a business services perspective. We've been working very hard behind the scenes to try to um process as many payments as we can, pay as many invoices as we can. Uh, the team has uh been working from home. However, there's a lot of limitations uh when you look at paying invoices, as a lot of those would be through um in uh coming through mail. We have put a hold on mail and deliveries at this point. However, with the news that schools will uh remain closed past April 6th, we are going to um redirect them centrally and have a local store through the mail so that we can do our part and pay the bills that we have for the services that were rendered and goods that were received. That uh means we've divided the uh accounts payable uh team into uh two uh separate teams and uh with very limited access to the board office. Um, they're going to be uh going in on a rotating basis. We're working on a protocol on what that would look like in terms of going in and sanitizing and making sure that we're um taking care of our staff as they go into the building. Um, we're looking at processing the invoices we do have right now in the mail and have a communication ready for all of our vendors, including school vendors, to forward any future um invoices electronically to our generic accounts payable email. And uh we would like to um no longer process uh paper invoices going forward to the extent possible. Uh, at this point, we're not um putting in any new orders unless it's an emergency uh order, cleaning supplies uh with facility services or any other emergency repair. Um, and uh we are also drafting communication for uh schools to share with our um parents in terms of refunds for the trip cancellations as well as refunds for the other fees uh that would have been paid through school-generated funds, uh which have been at this point suspended, and we're working on a process to reimburse parents for anything that they have been um that they might have been paid for, but those activities will no longer take place. Um, we are going to communicate also a process for employee reimbursements, again, looking at doing everything electronically and for direct deposits, uh and will reach out to trustees as well in terms of uh this process. And we're working on uh March 31st ministry reporting, which is a seven-month report uh required for the provincial consolidation. Uh, the timing is fast approaching, and we're waiting on uh hearing some updates in terms of how we will complete this, as not a lot of the transactions might be um processed on time, given the the times we're in, and also looking for a timeline uh clarification as they may potentially be looking at an extension. With the budget, we are assuming the same timeline for now. Uh, however, with the provincial budget being put on hold, we are expecting that the Minister of Education will provide us with some more clarification later, uh hopefully later this week in terms of where we are with expecting the grant for student needs release. And that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, and over to Superintendent Trufan for Information Services and Superintendent Padra Barak for Safe Schools.
Uh, thank you very much Superintendent Ruddock, and good evening, everybody. Uh, just uh update from Information Services. Our number one priority for IT is to keep our systems running remotely. Uh, our data center, which gives us connectivity, is being monitored daily, and we are also doing our backups to preserve our data. Over the last couple of weeks, we've worked with multiple departments to ensure that staff have a safe and secure connectivity while at home, and this, of course, includes multi-factor authentication. Um, David and Julie T. have already indicated that we're working closely with the program department to help support the online learning any way we can. We also know next steps will, we'll be working with staff um across other departments to access other core applications, because we we aren't sure how long this will go on for, and we know that some of the applications will be um will need to have access. Um, in terms of communication, um we've done some emergency uh contact lists for all of our ten employee groups, so we can uh push out uh information to them very quickly, and it will be delivered right to their uh mailboxes. Um, and just so you know, our IT staff um- And just so you know, our IT staff, they are working quite hard. They're monitoring our top desk, which is our ticket system. And they're cleaning out tickets. Staff are putting in tickets and as soon as staff are putting in tickets, we're doing our best to give them assistance. And just from an overall perspective, we are operating on the absolute, providing the best customer service we possibly can. We have an attitude of a yes, yes, we will do whatever we can. However, we just ask that some of the questions might take time because we want to make sure that our network is protected. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gord. From a Safe Schools perspective, we are in certainly a different and unique phase. These days are coded as instructional day. So they, we've notified schools if they do have incidents. Might be things like cyberbullying come up. We are here to help and support them. Concepts such as Nexus of the School get very complex. So we are going to work through and support schools if those come up. We've also extended all hearings and appeals that may come by mutual consent with parents. So we've reached agreements there to extend those to a logical startup time, whenever that may be. In terms of childcare, Maya touched on a few things. But I would just like to add that we have volunteered one of the board's childcare sites that are co-located, if needed, with Halton Region and the ministry to offer emergency childcare for essential workers, if needed. So they'll let us know if that is needed and we're open to working with them to accommodate that. And we do meet weekly with all 11 of our childcare partners just to keep them in the loop and updated. That's it for me.
Thank you. And now for an update from Human Resources, Superintendent McFadden. And then to Superintendent Pennyfather for donations and food security.
Thank you through the chair. HR has, of course, been focusing on our one core function of paying people accurately throughout the shutdown period. And that includes permanent and occasional teacher employees and doing so remotely. So that is a huge task and I must commend our IT department who have gone above and beyond to set us all up with remote access and problem solve a number of serious issues with providing this service off-site. But it is happening and it is accurate. So also a shout out to all of the staff of HR who've made that happen. As you know, we're also involved at this time of the year in staffing for next year. So we have migrated that to an online system. And that has proven to, it's a very paper-focused and usually done in in-person meetings with our principals. So all of that is happening online and is going very well in elementary. Secondary, we had postponed due to the class size issues, but that resulted itself shortly prior, before the shutdown. So we are engaging in conversations with OSSTF about how we can start up the secondary staffing process and how that can be done remotely. Posting, recruitment, interview, hiring, all of that is still needing to take place because babies are still being born. So people are going off on leave and they still need to be replaced. We anticipate that unfortunately we'll be facing some illness due to COVID-19. So we know we will have to have processes in place to replace those workers who become ill. All of this requires a knowledge of what working at home looks like, both from what tasks need to be done and how do we inform our staff who are at home of what tasks and responsibilities we expect from them. So all of that's taking place through staff communication in conjunction with conversations with our union partners. So that, that's a high overview from HR. Thank you.
Greetings. I'm hoping you can hear me?
Yes.
Good. There's two stages, there are two parts to this. The first is that, as we all know watching the news, one of the worries with addressing COVID-19 are shortages for our frontline medical workers or shortages of other materials. And there's some discussion about folks who aren't using them now, how can we share them? And we do have some of those kinds of materials. The ministry, government, and local hospitals and medical providers, the intent is to coordinate the allocation centrally. But what we are doing at this point is we are currently conducting inventory centrally and also through our administrators at school sites to support this effort. So when requested, we're ready to go and we can get the supplies to those folks who need them. The next part is a good news story and it's about food security. We have a wonderful, a number of wonderful partners, Food for Kids, Food for Thought and Food for Life, who have different functions with providing food security to our students. And they continue to work with our Co-Terminus Board and us to make sure this is happening. Food gift cards are being mailed home because, from Food for Kids, because they can't be, they can't be dropped, those little nice bags that arrive at schools on Friday. So instead, they're mailing home the cards. And Food for Thought is transferring funds over to other agencies so that they can get food to our students. And Food for Life is actually coordinating an effort where they're actually going to do home delivery of food, food packages to families that need them. And they've already been working with Halton Housing to, Halton Housing to make this happen. The next stage is that they're actually, we're actually going through our principals to make sure we check on those students who we know may need this support. And they're going to, we're going to contact those families and hook them up with Food for Life so that home delivery of food can happen. After that initial stage, they will be going out to, they will be going out wider in the community because, as you know, more people may be getting in the position of not having food security than before this started. The good news from the folks at Food for Life is there's lots of food out there right now to distribute. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, over to Superintendent Etoff for Communications Updates.
Thank you, Collette. Yeah, obviously, it's been, it's been a busy time in communications of supporting lots of different needs, both internally as well as with our external communications. In terms of internal communications, obviously, working with representatives from lots of different departments with respect to lots of different messaging. As you've been seeing, we've been sending regular updates out to staff as well as, as well as to our families, as well as to the broader community as well. Certainly, a big piece of work over the last few days has been building out our website to support the continuity of learning. And so you'll see that there's now a slider on our, on our main homepage of our website for ease of access for parents to get into our website and see and find the ministry portal as well as our maiden Halton resources that are located there. It's been a busy place. Within the first 24 hours of putting up that page with those resources, we've had over, over 4,000 visits. So certainly, our parents and families are taking advantage of those resources right away. We have made a caution with, with respect to families engaging with, and staff as well in terms of promoting third-party resources due to privacy concerns. So that's certainly been noted on our website as well as through our, as well as through our messaging. We have done certainly a great deal of support with respect to what Associate Director Boggs spoke about in terms of that whole check-in process and our staff engaging with our, with our students. And so I won't go over those pieces because Associate Director Boggs went through them earlier. But a big piece of the messaging that went out yesterday for our families, of course, lots of disappointment, I'm sure, with the many cancellations and postponements. We're working with our administrators and have provided a number of different resources and letters that they can use now that they pick up the ball and reach out to their families directly with the various different cancellations. For example, excursions, both domestic and international, between now and the end of the year. We've developed resources to support our administrators in communicating important information, including refund processes. The social distancing piece certainly has been something that has come up. And I know our Facility Service staff, and as you may have noted as well, across virtually all our jurisdictions, playgrounds are being closed, signage is going up. We developed some messaging today and posted it on social media. Within the first five hours, we've had over 7,000 impressions and 400 engagements. So certainly, we are getting the messaging out there and getting lots of positive feedback in return. I guess the final piece that I will speak to and really brings us back to the beginning of the meeting with Trustee Lau's questions, is we are developing a very comprehensive Q and A on the COVID area of our website, which again is accessible through the slider on the homepage. And as the questions are coming in through our Contact Us@hdsb.ca, through that email address, we're filtering those out to the various different departments, finding the answers, getting back to those individuals personally. And then if they are new questions, we are posting them on our Q and A. So that's being updated on a regular basis. We're doing the exact same thing with our staff. We have a whole separate staff Q and A set up and separate email addressed for issues and concerns and questions particular to staff members. And that's it for me.
Thank you. So as, as you can hear, it's truly an immense amount of work that has been accomplished in only a week and a half, which is kind of astonishing when you think about the fact that it's only been a week and a half. One last piece I'll just add is that yesterday, we hosted virtual meetings with all of our administrators, both elementary and then secondary. And they are, of course, connecting with their staff and families and leading a lot of this work in their virtual schools. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Director Miller.
Director Miller?
Sorry, Chair of Events, I was still muted. Through your chaired events, to you and all the other trustees, we apologize that that took some time. But I, we thought it was necessary that you, you hear what's going on department by department and what's going on in the board. As I'm, I'm sure you are getting questions from staff, community. You may get questions from vendors, you may get all sorts of questions. So we thought that the more information trustees could be armed with, the better it would be. The purpose of it was not to describe how hard everybody's working because you know that they're already working very hard. And I'm so proud of this team of superintendents and the senior team and, and the rest of the staff, our general managers, who are all on these meetings and working hard. The purpose was to say that we're trying our best to address all the issues that this, that have arisen out of this. And we're trying to anticipate issues that we have not yet found, but for sure will emerge. And, and to say, you know, the one caveat around this whole thing is a little bit of this is trial and error. And there are going to be mistakes. Sometimes we won't communicate as well as we'd hoped we would. Sometimes we won't get the IT working as well as we would want and so on. This has all been fast and very furious. We're essentially redesigning the delivery of education that we've been doing for years and years and years in a two-week period. So forgive us for some of the errors we make. I can tell you, the intent is always positive and to make this the best possible scenario for our students and their families. So with that, I will pass it back to the chair and I'm assuming there'll be several questions.
There is a growing list. So first, we'll start with Trustee Collard.
And Chair of Events, can I ask that the questions be directed to me? And then I will distribute them to the appropriate people? That's the best way to do it, I think?
Sounds great. So Trustee Collard, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Through you too, Director Miller. So with the possible, the very possible circumstance that kids might not be going back to school this year. Bateman is closing. Their very last commencement was supposed to be in June and might happen in the fall instead. Their closing ceremonies probably won't be happening. And I'm wondering how we give them the opportunity to celebrate their school? If we're giving any thought at all to just having it, everything in the fall the way it would have been in June? It's, it's an emotional time for them and now this has compounded it, obviously. I'm wondering if any thought's gone into that?
Through your chaired events, through Trustee Collard, some thought has got into it for sure. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Blackwell in a second. We certainly empathize with that community and this is not something that we could have ever have wanted for that community. And, and they're being denied some closure, a very emotional closure for a school that means a great deal to them and was a heartbeat of that community for many, many years. I think it's incumbent upon us to try to figure out and we have started our brief conversation, we have started conversations around how we can address, in particular, the closing ceremonies. The commencement is somewhat a little easier to, to address because, as you are aware, many of our schools used to have fall commencements. And it's only been in recent years that we've gone all to June commencement. So, you know, we can address that. But, you know, the other part is a prom for the Bateman kids, which they would do, but they would certainly, they may have done their own or combined with their new schools, whatever. But these are issues that we'll try to address. I'll pass it to Superintendent Blackwell to see if she has anything to add.
Thank you, Director Miller, through the chair. Just very quickly, as we've been talking tonight and I echo Director Miller's comments for sure. We have fit with one of the thoughts that we, that we've already had on the table. We've had both principals of Bateman, actually, all three principals have already reached out. We will continue to meet. And I think we have to wait and see when school resumes. We may be back this year. So we don't want to make, you know, plans saying, let's put everything to the fall and not be able to talk to some of the kids and, and find ways to find out what they need within their own community because they often give us some really good advice. So it is on our radar. We do have committees and we've also been very successful with our Google Hangouts. So that's something that we can do to draw those committees back together. So that, that will be happening.
Thank you. May I follow up?
Sure.
Yes. On my follow-up, I'm concerned about transitions for students with special education needs, particularly those in the CPP program. I know there were supposed to be visit days for them to go to Nelson this spring to see the facilities, get familiar with it, get comfortable with it. And I'm, I'm really concerned that if they don't have that opportunity at some point before September, it's, it's going to be a little bit more difficult for them to transition. And I'm wondering what, if any, plans have been coming forth on that? So we, we, go ahead, Director Miller.
No, go ahead Superintendent Blackwell.
Yeah, and that is one of the discussion points in terms of how we do operationalize everything. When we find out when we have access to the building. Right now, we don't. As you know, Burlington is, the city of Burlington is a state of emergency. We know that the construction is continuing. So it's actually putting us in a good spot at this point. And we will put that on our radar and communicate that directly with families. families.
Thank you.
Okay, next is trustee Garrett. Trustee Garrett?
Yes, thank you. To the director, I don't know if you are aware that up in northern Halton, where I live, where I'm sitting right now, where I'm very lucky that I actually have internet to see my computer tonight and cell phone service to actually speak with you guys, some days we don't. And I guess my question is, is it being looked at and considered for our students? There being, there's a lot of pressure on our high school kids that, you know, they should be checking their internet, they should be doing their courses, blah, 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 but if they don't actually have the service, because in some spots, there is zero service up here, how are those kids going to do their workload?
Through you chaired events, to trustee Garrett, I am going to pass it on to Associate Director Bog after a couple of comments from me. We are fully aware of that, and we know that around the province, that's a significant issue, and we've even looked at some creative possibilities, like using the post office as an example. But I'll turn it over to Associate Director Bog, because we're aware of those issues.
Thanks for that, Director Miller. And that is certainly one of the reasons that we're trying to get a baseline right now to try to understand how many families we are, may have to look at some alternative measures for, through surveying each teacher surveying their kids. You might notice that you've heard some of the superintendents use the term distance learning rather than online learning, because as Director Miller says, there are lots of areas in the province where internet connectivity is really difficult. So I think what we, we're right at the beginning stages, but we have made a commitment, even in talking to our unions, that we're going to have to have some flexibility around how this happens, and it may not be, well, it will not be a one-size-fits-all solution. So we're just digging into it, and we can certainly update trustees more as we start to understand how this is going to play out a little bit with any more detail. Thanks.
May I have a follow-up?
And I would just add to that, before we follow up, trustee Garrett, that I have regular calls with directors in Ontario, both all the public boards, but all the boards, French Catholic, French Public, and Catholic boards, in addition to conferences twice a week with the ministry, and we are sharing ideas on how we can do these things. So we recognize it's a provincial issue, and we are looking at good ideas that are coming around the province that could be applied to Halton. And I'm done.
Go ahead, trustee Garrett.
Okay, just a quick follow-up on that, and it really is for the staff at this point, because the staff are also expected to be using their internet and their technology at home. Are we covering the costs? Are there extra costs involved covering our staff's internet?
Through you chaired events, to trustee Garrett, most of the big providers have announced that there will not be additional charges, and there'll be unlimited data, and that, so there should not be any additional charges for our staff using their personal devices. But I would add this, and I have mentioned this to our union counterparts, and I'm not trying to be cold-hearted about it, but staff will also be not having to drive to work. So on the one hand, there'll be some savings for them in terms of gas mileage, that may not offset it, but I think the fact that the big providers are going to allow for unlimited data. If obviously costs get too high, we will have to look at that. We don't anticipate that as an issue in our conversations, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee Lau?
Hi, I'll just keep this super quick. Two things. First, I sent out all of the questions, I like put it all into a document, and I sent that to all of the trustees, but I couldn't find like the group to send it to the superintendent, so I put it there, so I don't know if one of you could share it. And then the second thing, yesterday, one of the Instagram accounts that I follow, it's Robert Bateman Prom 2020, it's run by three students who've said that they're not canceling prom because they're not affiliated with the HDSP, and apparently, kids have already paid and things like that, but they said that they were looking to push it into the summer. I'm not sure, I just wanted to bring that up, I guess.
Through you chaired events, to trustee Lau, I received your questions, and I have put them to the appropriate people, so you're good with those. As for that, yeah, we have a mixture of proms in this board. We have some proms that are run by the schools, and those are the ones we've canceled, and some proms have been run by students and parents in the past, and they go offsite, and they do it, and it is not, and I repeat, not a school event. There's no staff there, there's no staff input, there's no advertising in the school, et cetera, and so on. So I can't speak about what goes on specifically at Robert Bateman, but those do happen, and it's up to them to run it. However, I think that will be superseded by directions from the provincial government on large gatherings of people and so on as we get into this COVID. If it's in the summer sometime, we would have no ability to stop it, and nor would we stop it if the government is allowing large group activities. So I'm not sure if that answers the question, but that's the general answer to it.
Sounds good, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustee Gray?
Thank you very much, through the chair. As we all know, the government has released documents, an online portal available, which enables students at every grade level to continue learning while away from school. There have been questions in my community specific to the fact that some of these online programs are not directly addressing the needs of students, particularly in special programs like life skills. I think I, tonight I recorded in listening to Superintendent Zahnfeld that there are support for teachers, and they're about to begin to learn more about helping with through long-distance learning, and that they're breaking it down by exceptionalities, and that there will be resources and strategies provided. Specifically, my question is this, is there in fact consideration being given to the release of distance learning materials and resources for students in the life skills program? And secondly, will the board be permitting life skills students to access technologies such as Chromebooks from their home schools during the period of time that they're not permitted to be in school?
Through you chaired events, to trustee Gray, I'm going to direct most of the answer to this question to Superintendent Zahnfeld, but I do want to, I don't want to paint this as a totally rosy picture for the trustees or for the community. There, we strive to break down all inequities. We always have done. It's going to be a greater challenge during this time around the things that trustee Gray has identified, that trustee Garrett's just identified, that trustee Collard just identified, and I, you know, it pains me to say it, but I think there will be circumstances that we have very difficult, a very difficult challenge in meeting that, those circumstances. So with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Zahnfeld.
Sure, can you hear me? Hello? Great. So through the chair, trustee Gray, definitely you have identified this is a priority that first, the students in those self-contained classes, we're working, going to work closely with those teachers to help them with what those strategies look like, and certainly, and for some of our students with more complex needs, this gets more and more challenging as the director intimated. So, you know, we're certainly going to do our best to support those teachers and also parents, knowing, you know, the burden that sits with them at home. So, you know, that's an area of focus for us. In terms of technology, we're aware that a number of our students rely heavily on the technology that they have at school. Some of it is the assistive devices, and in others, it's other mobility devices that they have. So, but specifically around the assistive tech, many of those students didn't bring those devices home with them. So we are, teachers in general across the system are going to be doing a bit of an inventory with their students to see what they have at home, both in terms of devices and connectivity, and that includes students in self-contained classes. And then as we get a sense of what those needs are at home, I know we're going to be looking at how we can meet those needs, perhaps through devices that we have or other means, and that's maybe where I should hand this off to Superintendent Trufan.
Superintendent Trufan?
Yeah, sorry, very much, Superintendent Zahnfeld, yeah, there's no question, I think you're asking me about technology that could be, potentially be sent home with students?
Yes.
Yeah, no, you know, right now, there is no question that we have a lot of technology at our schools, and we are getting an inventory. I know Superintendent Hunt-Gibbons and somebody were set, principals are working, getting what type of technology our students and families need, and when and if we can get into schools and start to get a system in place to give out this technology for the families that need them, we're happy to do that, and we want to do that. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, yes, thank you very much, both of you.
Okay, so trustee Reynolds? Trustee Reynolds?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, through the chair. I had heard Associate Director Bog speak this evening about short-term and long-term planning, short-term meaning the next few weeks. So I'll frame my question, and I guess it's two-part, around that in terms of an immediate need for continuity of learning, and perhaps a question that could be put on the Q and A as a placeholder. I have heard from parents who are looking for support for their elementary students who are in French immersion programming. Their concern stems from their perspective that their children are learning French, and they are not French language proficient themselves, and I was wondering if you could address what supports are going to be available to help these parents who are English-speaking only in helping their kids in the French immersion programming?
I can, do you want me to jump in, Director Miller?
Yeah, go ahead.
We, thanks for this question, trustee Reynolds, it's a good question. We've started to dig into this. This is one of the examples where there's no perfect solution out there, I think. There are some pretty good online French resources where kids can get some language pieces, but again, we're just starting to dig into this, and we don't have a final answer. I wonder whether Superintendent Salmini may have a little bit more insight and can share with you, but I will say that this is on our radar and one of our questions to look into. That's it for now for me.
Can you hear me? Yes. So through the chair, to trustee Reynolds, this is on our radar, and our instructional program leader with responsibility for French is currently reaching out to her counterparts and other boards and trying to get as many resources and suggestions and things that we can put out to families in that area. And that's it for me.
Okay, follow-up please?
Yes.
So perhaps, I guess, from a long-term perspective, something what we, we would, parents would want to know is, in, for kids who are in the French immersion, maybe even English-language learners, I think parents would want to know how their students would progress on or advance to another grade under this, under this current challenge. And I'm putting this question out there because I know that it's something that would be on many people's minds, but if you could perhaps put that as a placeholder, as the ministry, I guess, gives us more information, but I think parents would want to know how this current crisis is going to impact their kids from advancing.
Through you chaired events, to trustee Reynolds, yeah, we can certainly put that, and we will put that as a placeholder somewhere, because, I mean, the reality is, we're only into day three of this shutdown, and last week being March break, some of the conversations that we would have liked to have had, we couldn't have because some people were away from our programming perspective. But we're into those now, and, you know, I think we will need some certainty around when schools will open as well, which hopefully we will get in the coming days or coming weeks around that. So there is going to be a lot of ambiguity here, and a lot of, which is not heartening for parents to hear for sure, I understand that completely, but I don't know how we can avoid it, because parents like certainty, as I do as a parent, and we want that certainty, but unfortunately, there's not a lot of certainty that we can provide at the moment. The only thing that's really certain is we're doing our best with the information available and the tools available to try to get it out there. But you make a very good point, and we will certainly put it out there so that we can, you know, assuage parents' anxiety further down the road. I don't think we can assuage anybody's anxiety at this point in time, but we're doing our best to try to do that, but, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Oliver?
Through you, chair. In thinking about food security in our community, many of our schools have breakfast and snack programs and supply, and they have supplies of food items in their cupboards and fridges. So, you know, this food is currently available and might potentially go to waste. We're talking about things like vanilla bars, yogurt tubes, cheese whicks, et cetera, maybe some frozen bread in the freezer, and these are things that are in short supply and some of the stores, other supply chains are affected. So I'm wondering if we can get these food items out of the schools and share them with families in need and/or our local food banks? I know we've heard about deep cleaning and very limited access into the schools, but I wonder if with some advice from Public Health, we can work out a quick and safe way to get in and out of the school without much disruption to the cleaning that's been done, and in ways that will support infection control? Thank you.
I will take this question through you chaired events, to trustee Oliver. It's a good idea, but I'm afraid we won't be doing it. We've ordered our schools closed, and we now know that some of that food may have been in there for 10 days, and we, there's a quality control issue around the food that would actually be in there, and we're really not equipped to have inspections of the food, is this appropriate, or is this whatever? Superintendent Pennyfather may want to weigh in around how we're working with, as he talked in his presentation around safety equipment and so on, that it's being provincially coordinated. But we will not be opening our schools for the next two weeks, because we've done that deep cleaning, and we don't want to return to that process, and we are following the advice of Public Health around this. So it is a challenge, but again, I emphasize that, yeah, there's food in those schools, but, you know, that food will all have to be checked before we could distribute it to anybody, and I don't think we have the capacity for that, so. And I just see that Superintendent Puchetti has reiterated what I said, they, we can't trust the age of the food, so, you know, for us to distribute it would be a challenge. Um, superintendent Pennyfather, do you want to add anything?
No, just that, uh, well, in brief, um, there was, um, there was, caretakers did do, um, some clear out of perishables that were in the fridge right at the beginning of March break, so that's a, a good thing. But the, I, I would like to reiterate, uh, in talking to, uh, Bram Hill, who is quarterbacking the whole food, uh, food security, uh, through Food for Life and getting ready to do home deliveries and, um, that kind of thing for our students. Is that, um, he says there's, there's a bounty of food out there right now. It's, it's just connecting everybody. So I, I took that as a good news item and, um, and I hope that that, that continues. He's, uh, lots of suppliers and lots of, uh, food companies are, are making offers to them, uh, to support our students.
Okay, so we're onto the next question then, and that is from trustee Amos. Trustee Amos, you might have your mute on. Trustee Amos, I'm sensing you may have technical difficulties. We'll try one more time. Okay, you may want to hang up and redial in and, uh, go back on the list. Okay, trustee Reynolds.
Hi again, um, so my question, uh, through the chair, is, um, whether the ministry has given any direction on whether, uh, the, I want to say, school committees, um, need to meet or, um, connect? And I'm talking about school councils, parent involvement, board committees. Um, is there any direction on, um, uh, supporting or encouraging or, um, uh, how, 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 how groups are going to move forward?
Through your chaired events, trustee Reynolds, now there's been, uh, in our conference, in our call, in my calls with the ministry, uh, we're now up to four of those. Uh, there's been no talk of those committee meetings or anything. The, the focus has been on board meetings at this time. So there's been no, no discussion around that.
Okay. Okay, trustee Amos, are you back online? You may have to hit star six. Okay, well, uh, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, I did have to log off and on. Okay, thank you so much. First, I'd like to say how incredibly proud I am of our board and of all staff, the superintendents, director, um, and everyone, even, and, and the trustees. Because I think that in this time of uncertainty and probably is equivalent to a world war at another time, that we are all doing our best for the students of Holton and we're all doing our best we can for just Holton in general. So I'd just like to say thank you so much for, to everybody. Now, my question is to the director, and I know you probably can't give me a definitive answer, but has the ministry given us an indication of, I know they have said that they potentially are going to make this longer than the two weeks after March break? At what point they would have to look at either extending the school year or, um, uh, making, um, sometimes an alteration? And part two of the question is, are they also talking to universities and colleges so that hopefully students won't lose their years and they will be able to continue on?
Uh, through you chaired events, trustee, uh, trustee Amos, uh, they have given no indication how long that this, uh, uh, shutdown will occur. Uh, but they have said that they will follow the advice of the chief medical officer of Ontario, Dr. David Williams. So they're working closely with, uh, Dr. David Williams and they will follow the advice of public health around that decision. So, uh, although they have not said anything, I think we can maybe surmise or glean from some of the comments from public health, uh, where the government may be going. But they have not said anything definitively. As in terms of the school year, is my understanding at this point, uh, the expectation of the government is that learning will continue in an alternative form, which, um, and they've called it a continuity of learning, which we, associate director Boge and his team have been talking about. And therefore, the school year would not be in, uh, jeopardy. So there's also been no talk about extending the school year, alternate school years or whatever. And your final, and final question around the colleges and universities, um, uh, and post-secondary opportunities for kids, is they have had several conversations with colleges and universities. Um, but I don't know, there's been no, I, I shouldn't say there's been no discussion, but there's been no discussion with us about the nature of those conversations in terms of, uh, acceptance for, for high school students going next year or what it means for them going next year. I presume those conversations, uh, have been taking place as they have been talking to the post-secondary institution. Um, so, there you have it.
Well, thank you. I knew you probably couldn't give me a definitive answer, but I, those are some of the questions I've been getting, so I just wanted to put them out there. So thank you very much.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, since there are no more speakers on the speakers list, I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is, uh, I fear for the food that is probably sitting in many lockers across our entire board. Um, I'm sure there's a lot of rotten stuff. And, uh, how are we going to deal with that? As well as the fact that there's many personal items that students will have left in their lockers?
Uh, thank you chaired events, uh, through you chaired events. I'll just refer that, uh, we, it's been a topic of conversation for us as well, many, many times. But I'll refer it to, uh, superintendent Puchetti.
So, uh, thank you very much, uh, to, uh, director Miller and to the chair. Yes, it is a concern. Um, it's something we are simply going to have to deal with, uh, when, um, we make the buildings accessible again to staff. However, we do have, um, as I said, we have facility supervisors who are touring the buildings every couple of days. Um, and they are dealing with, um, fridges and, uh, the milk carton, milk program, um, so they're dealing with that now. Um, most of the lockers are locked, so we wouldn't have access to them. But, um, we're just going to have to monitor it. And, and when the schools are open, there may be some pretty awful messes to deal with. Um, but I, I don't know how else we can go around, uh, breaking into lockers. It's going to be, uh, more of a challenge, I think. So I hope that answers that question.
That'll do. Um, also, as, um, and this has to do with, uh, sort of converting to online or distance learning. And that is, are we providing staff with training? Because I know when I myself went from teaching in a classroom to, uh, facilitating an online course, uh, it was very different and I had a bit of a learning curve for myself. So are we providing training for our staff to be able to do this?
Thank you chaired events, through you chaired events, to, uh, to you chaired events. I will refer that to associate director Boge.
And, and the simple answer, uh, thank you, uh, director Miller. The simple answer is yes, uh, there, actually there are, uh, training modules that are already accessible to our staff. But we are working on plans right now. And I think superintendent Salmini can share some, some things with you, uh, that are already in the works as well. We do recognize that we've got some teachers in our board that may have, uh, very little experience still, even in this day and age, um, really, um, embracing Google Classroom, for example, or some other online platforms. So those pieces will, will be in place centrally. And we also know there's lots of, um, uh, experience in each of our schools as well. And so I know our principals are already mobilizing the experts in their buildings, um, because they've got relationships there within their building. So they've got some coaching already going on within their buildings as well. Thanks.
And only, the last thing I have is more of a comment. And that is, um, uh, that I, I know teacher, I had, I've had teachers over the past week or so contacting me, they're very enthusiastic, actually, some of them, about reconnecting with their students and, and continuation of learning. Um, my, uh, my, my caution, of course, is about volume and expectations. Because, uh, there, we have many parents that they're now actually supposed to be working at home as well. So there is no way we can expect parents to become instantly, uh, or in any way, a teacher. Uh, uh, we cannot make up for, uh, teachers who have been trained, uh, in, you know, in education. So, um, and pedagogy and we, uh, so I, I, from a, a parent's perspective, my, my hope for what the goal is for this year is to cover the basics and offer enrichment. Um, like, uh, I don't, I don't know if you understand what I mean, but, um, you know, if you've got three kids in a house and now you're responsible to be teaching grade three, grade five and grade seven or something else, um, and you're supposed to be also, uh, managing something from a distance and you're new to that too, uh, that creates a huge amount of stress in the house. And though that we have parents that are chomping at the bit to have, you know, have it all for their kids right away, there's also going to be that other segment of parents that are already at, they're getting close to their limit of being able to cope with what's going on around them. And, uh, and I think we really need to be cognizant of, of that whole range that's out there. So, um, I, I, so I wanted to say that, but I also wanted to applaud all the work that everybody is doing. It is a ton. Uh, and, uh, also, uh, I wanted to mention that we, we have students in our board right now that are working at those grocery stores, they're working at those takeout and delivery kinds of places. And so we have heroes among us that are our own students. And I, I want to applaud them and thank them for, for, you know, doing those risky jobs that, um, we've asked them to do with society. So, um, uh, so I guess I'll leave it at that for, for this part.
Uh, thank you chaired events. Uh, that concludes the director's report. Um, sad one, but a necessary one, uh, given the circumstances. So, uh, thank you trustees for the questions and thank you to the senior team for, for their updates and the answering of, uh, of all those questions. I'm sure, um, there will be many, many, many more questions in the coming days and hopefully we, we start to be able to fill in the gaps of the answers, um, that might be missing at this point. Thanks, I'm done.
And we've had, uh, vice chair Harrison pop in on the list. Uh, oh, she says she can wait to Q and A. Okay. So, um, we'll move forward to communications from the chair. And, uh, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that I was, uh, and director Miller, were on a conference call with the minister of education last Friday. It seems like so long ago, but it was just last Friday. And the minister actually took, uh, questions from all the chairs, uh, of the 72 boards, um, across Ontario. It was, uh, very, um, informative. Uh, we all are, we all are in the same boat together and all have the same questions. And, uh, I, uh, just to let the trustees know, I've, I've sent the minister a quick email to, uh, thank him for that opportunity and to encourage him to, uh, keep up the communication with, uh, the, the trustees. Um, and he did say during the, the conference that, um, governance is very important at this time and, um, that he, um, he wanted to know if, if it was useful. So I wanted to let him know that it was, um.
Uh, chaired, chaired events, can I jump in there for a second?
Of course.
Um, on, uh, on our conference call with the deputy minister on Tuesday, she spoke about, Nancy Naylor's the deputy minister. She spoke about that conference call on Friday that, uh, all the chairs of the boards and the directors were on, uh, last Friday. And she had said that the minister thought it very important and they are working to set up another one. So, um, I thought I would let you know that.
Thank you. That's great information.